To order a regular meeting of the Village Board on Monday, May 18th at 7:00 PM. Tonight in the Germantown Village Hall Boardroom, and a couple of the trustees are joining us via the WebEx connection as well. This meeting has been given public notice in accordance with Sections 19.83 and 19.84 of the Wisconsin statutes in such form that will apprise the general public and news media of subject matter that is intended for consideration and action. Roll call shows all Village Board members present except for Trustee Myers, who is excused. At this time, I'll ask us all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is President's Report. Just a couple of things to report tonight. On Saturday, I took a little drive and went down Main Street and different businesses throughout the village just to see what was going on, and I was very happy to see some participants on supporting the businesses on Main Street. Not what I would call overly crowded, but just a good group in each of the ones that were down along the Main Street corridor. So happy to see those that support. I appreciated all those that supported during the stay-at-home order through your support, through whether it be online orders or Grubhub or however. Continue to support the businesses as they try to reestablish and regroup going forward. They'll appreciate any and all help and all your support as well, so thank you for that. Got a couple of calls about our recycling center. First and foremost, that it's been open for a while and stays open, and very appreciative of that. People are paying attention and have noticed that we do have even on tonight's agenda some things about the village operations and how we're going to be saving some money that we propose to be in shortfall. There has been some questions in regards to staffing there. Some felt that one was enough, and we're questioning why there were two. So not real clear to that. The only thing that I could think about was, first of all, we tried to have two people for safety reasons. There's also watch for anything that's not supposed to be dropped off at the recycling center, whether it be metals or rocks or invasives or things like that was the only thing that I could come up with. If anybody has any other input as to why there were two people there, I would appreciate that information, and so would people that are watching. Village Administrator.
Well, thank you, and I can start the answer. Our Public Works Director is here as well. If you'd like to jump in and add any information. But we do have two people on board, in part for the safety, as you mentioned. We also do monitor the materials that are going in to make sure that there are not any metals or things like that, larger rocks that could damage equipment or invasive species, since we do try to compost the materials and use it for nursery purposes. The other reason that we have a second person available now is to try to keep the traffic flowing through. There are occasions where we have elderly people who are using the recycling center that need some assistance. You know, normally, under regular conditions, probably just let the folks take their time and, you know, go slowly if necessary. However, to try to keep the traffic moving through and minimize the number of people that are in there at one time to keep the social distancing in place, we've had a second person working there. So Public Works Director is nodding, so I think that's the response.
Okay. Appreciate that information, and if anyone else has any questions in regards to any village operations or anything about budget, please feel free to contact any one of us here at the dais or within Village Hall. That's all I have for President's Reports. So next item on the agenda is announcements of forthcoming events of public interest, committee and department reports, and we'll start with committee reports with committee chairs with Trustees Abel.
General Government met earlier tonight, and will meet again on June 15th at 6:00 PM in this room.
All right. Thank you. Trustee Kaminsky.
Public Works will meet in this room on June 3rd, which is a Wednesday, at 6:00 PM.
All right. Thank you. Trustee Miller.
Public Safety will meet on Monday, June 1st at 6:00 PM in the Village Boardroom.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone else have anything else they'd like to bring forward for announcements of forthcoming events of public interest, committee or department reports? Seeing there is nothing else, we'll go on to citizen input and public appearance on items not subject to a public hearing. There are no public hearings on tonight's agenda. If there is anyone within the audience or online that wishes to come forward for citizen input or public appearance, all I would ask is that you state your name and your address for the record. Anyone wishing to come forward for citizen input or public appearance?
I have a letter.
I will then recognize a village clerk.
Hi, I have a letter to read from the Germantown American Legion Post Number One. They say, "Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to make this request on behalf of the Germantown American Legion Post One. The coronavirus has hit all businesses hard, especially our post. Our only source of income is bingo and events such as weddings, birthday parties, and other special events. Unfortunately, for safety's sake, all post events have been canceled. For this reason, we are requesting a waiver of our liquor licensing fee. If and when this disease is under control, we would be happy to pay the fee at a prorated rate for the remainder of the year. The post, as all other businesses, still have ongoing fees, electric, gas, phone, insurance. But with no monies coming in, our budget is extremely tight. We have had a lot of unexpected expenses. We've replaced a furnace, ice machine, and extensive work done on our cooling system. Without income coming in, we are trying to cut back where we can. The waiver of this fee would help immensely. Thank you for considering our request. Sincerely, James Heineman, Finance Officer, Germantown American Legion Post One." And that was dated May 15th. And I would just like to remind everyone to speak clearly into the microphones. Michelle says she can hear everyone, but if everyone could please. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Something to consider bringing on to public safety, correct? So Trustee Miller, something to consider for future agenda that you have for your public safety meeting? Anyone else for citizen input or public? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just acknowledge you, Dan. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else for citizen input or public appearance? If not, we'll go on to next item, which is consent agenda. Motion to be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda, Items A through C as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve consent agenda, Items A through C. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve? No discussion? We'll do roll call vote, please.
Trustee Baum.
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Peiper.
Aye.
Trustee Wing.
Aye.
Trustee Zabel.
Aye.
Trustee Hudson.
Aye.
President Walter.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Next item is old business, which there is none listed, public hearings, which there are none tonight. So that then takes us to new business, starting with new business, Item A, Resolution 4-1-2020, the 2020 Budget Savings Plan. Give us some more information and background on that. I'll turn the meeting over to our Village Administrator, Steve Kreckel. Steve.
Thank you. At our last meeting, I went through the revenue side of the 2020 budget and the impacts that we're seeing related to the, you know, COVID-19 and the closure of businesses, et cetera. While it's still early in the year and we don't have very solid numbers on revenues, we are expecting that we'll have a significant decrease in several areas totaling somewhere in the range of $475,000 to $925,000. As I indicated at the last meeting, I've been working with the Finance Director and Department Heads on things that we can do that create some flexibility in the budget, expenditures that we can defer or delay for savings, but while also in case things aren't as bad as we think they may be, that we're able to go ahead later in the year potentially carry over. So what I put forward in this resolution, there's really four categories of expenditure reductions. First, there are some salary savings. We have two positions that are currently vacant. One that we would like to move forward with filling in the not-too-distant future is a village engineer. The other is a second building inspector position, which has been vacant for some time. We were planning on filling it due to higher inspections with a lot of the construction, particularly residential construction. I think at this point, we would hold off on filling that until that construction actually comes to fruition. There were two highway positions that the Village Board created and funded. We went through the hiring process but did not actually have individuals in those positions until March of this year, so there were some savings there. And then talking with DPW superintendents, I think we could delay the hiring of seasonals for some savings. There is some reduction of hours in the library and the rec programs, as there have enclosures in the library and some rec programs are not being offered. And then I've also included in here savings from two furlough days for what I would call the non-frontline staff. It would not affect the frontline police officers, firefighters, or public work staff, but would affect the rest of village staff. The way that I would recommend implementing these is look at them at one day per quarter if needed. It is possible that they won't be necessary, and we can evaluate at the end of each quarter whether or not to move forward with scheduling those furlough days. It's about $10,000 savings per furlough day. The next category are equipment purchases or some maintenance-type projects, things that would fall into that category. Some mowers, some work on splash pads and the decks on some of our splash pads, some miscellaneous supplies and things utilized for other projects. The fire department would defer the purchase of ropes that they would be using for training, deferral of picnic tables, and the police department would be deferring some training. Those types of reductions would total $188,000. Much of that, if the numbers turn out better than we expect, could be either spent later on in the year. We could take those projects on, or if we end up in a better situation than we anticipate right now, then we could carry that money forward and make those purchases in 2021. The next two items on here that are larger sums. The first is a seal coating program. The village has traditionally spent about $325,000 per year in seal coating roads. It is an important part in the maintenance of the road system, and it's not something that I would recommend or that Public Works would recommend eliminating in perpetuity, but it is something that we could hold off on this year in order to achieve that savings. One of the analogies that, when we were discussing this, that came up, it's a little bit like, you know, getting the oil changed on your car at 3,000 miles. You should do that on a regular basis. If you don't do that on a regular basis, you could damage your engine. But if one, you know, one year you go, instead of 3,000 miles, you go 4,000 miles before the oil change, it's not going to ruin the car. And I think that's what we're looking at with the seal coating program here. And again, this is an item where if, at the end of the year, the revenues do materialize better than what we had anticipated, we could carry that forward and use it for additional catch-up maintenance in 2021. And then finally, another item that came up in our discussion at the last meeting is use of reserves. We have, if my numbers are correct, about $6.7 million at the end of 2019 in our general fund balance. And again, while that's not a sustainable way of balancing the budget, it is a rainy day fund that's been accumulated over the years, and this is the type of situation that I think we do set aside those funds for. So we could use, if necessary, $250,000 from use of reserves. And that brings us to a total of $925,000, which I think is one of the, I won't say the worst-case scenario, but on the more pessimistic side of the projections and would allow us to balance the budget. And that the resolution is basically directing me as the Administrator to implement these, working with the Department Heads, and then report back to the Village Board on at least a quarterly basis on where we are.
Okay. Any questions?
To get it on the floor, I put the motion to approve Resolution 41-2020.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Trustee Zabel.
Yeah. One of the things you touched on earlier, the two employees that are working at the recycling center, are they regular employees, and are we paying them time and a half on Saturdays?
For that question, I'm going to ask to defer that to the Public Works Director, if that's okay with the Board.
Because that is a budgetary item also.
So when we first opened the yard, the very first Saturday, we did have two regular employees there. At that time, the two temporary seasonal people that were going to work there, one couldn't work there due to some health reasons, and I believe the other one was still on a trip or vacation or something. So we supported the yard with two full-time employees, and the following week, we had to do the same thing for Tuesday and Thursday. Then alternating, the one gentleman doesn't want to work every Saturday, so he is back on. We do have one seasonal employee there doing one week, and then we work and supplement it with full-time employees the other days. We did hire a seasonal high school student this past week just to work on the inside of the yard. The inside yard guy is much what Trustee Kreckel said, and that is to keep the people moving, because they're not used to having eight to 10 people in the yard is what we're restricting to. And so one person at the gate just can't leave, otherwise they'll just keep coming in, because they don't really follow the count inside. They may look in the middle and say, "There's only five people there," but there's six people by the brush pile. So our limitation following guidelines was, started with eight vehicles in the yard at the time. We upped it to 10 if they're spread out to the brush pile and the compost pile. So to answer your question, right now, it's not two full-time employees every day of the week, but we are augmenting some of it with our waste-worry-towery stuff.
And again, that goes back to the salaries within the budget and the salaries with the line item for the recycling center and the amount of money spent at that point in time to...
The demand for the yard was extremely high.
But it's always...
The pressure was there to open it. We had to facilitate it with employees that knew how to run the yard. We had to make sure invasive species were not brought in, that rock and debris and other items that tend to get snuck in the middle of piles. So we were basically ordered to open the yard up, and we had to use employees that we had to do it.
Yeah. I said, the views they had, the, like you say, the seasonal employees, the older gentleman that come in, and that's been going on for many years. And just to say that, because this year, we had a rush to open it up, even though it was on the normal opening uptime, and as a cover, we didn't open it. And to now say that we have to use the full-time employees, and again, we go through this, looking at salaries and people, but yet we seem to be putting a few more dollars and spending a few more dollars there than may or may not be necessary. I don't know. I haven't spent an awful lot of time looking at it.
We wouldn't be doing it if we didn't have to. The full-time employees surely don't want to work Saturdays if they don't have to at this point.
The only other thing I would suggest, if you're looking at salary savings, is that I personally would be willing to put in a salary from my side of it to help out if the month or whatever they need, to try to offset some of the dollar amounts, but that's just me.
What do you mean by that, Trustee Zabel?
Well, if we need, if we're getting to a point where some of these employees and some of the stuff that is here, the furlough days, if we could cut back on that or do something, I'd be more than willing to give back a month's salary just to help out. Eight doesn't help out much, we don't make that much, but it would be, it would be something that I would be willing to donate.
You'd be willing to furlough a trustee?
A trustee for a month, yeah, even though we'd be here working.
This is going to head hard.
It's got to be free.
You go for it.
That's got to be a first.
We could furlough a meeting.
It's just, like I said, it's just one of those things, and maybe there's a way of doing it, and maybe we'll get lucky enough and the revenue side hits it more than we anticipate.
I don't want to base it on luck. I think that what's been put together here is a good plan, and it's probably a little overplanned. I think it's to the heavier side of it, but let's not forget that, again, we have a substantial amount of reserves, and a part of the reason we put it there was for emergencies, and this, I think, qualifies as an emergency. So for the 250 that's there, I don't, I don't have a, you know, I'm not overjoyed that it's there, but I don't have a problem using it in this time to help offset. The last time we went through anything similar to this, we basically took the staff and we cut it by a quarter. And then we saw how that played out, and we tried to cover services as best we could, especially going into the busier season, which is normally summer into fall when all the projects are out there that most people would like to see accomplished, and we have a short time to do that in. I don't have a problem, you know, looking at splash pad deck work, knowing that a lot more people will probably be sticking around the area and probably using that more this year than previous years, I don't have a problem offsetting that and putting the reserves at 265.
I would do the same with the seal coating. I prefer to keep that in place and use reserve too, but that's just me.
That pushes that up to a half a million.
Right. But it's there. Now, you said we have built it to a point where we could use it for this pack, but...
We could. We also do have some possible plans to offset some building projects on that, and I don't want to dip too far into that where it would hurt that offset as well.
Now, you said we could put some of the building projects out for you.
It's all, it's all open. Right now, we have a motion on the floor, so anything you want to propose or amend is totally open to everybody on the Board to do so. Trustee Kaminsky.
Well, it's not like we can't change this, correct, in the future, if things don't materialize as negatively as we presume that they might. We don't really know anything in the month of May 2020. We don't. We have no idea how the economy is going to come out of this. I really credit Steve, you, for being as proactive on this as you have been, which is more proactive than most businesses I'm accustomed to working with, which is awesome. At least we know what we are potentially up against, and I think it's a good plan. Sure, I don't want to see seal coating go. As part of the Public Works Committee in particular, I don't want to see that go. But if there is, it's a big chunk of money, and this is where you get a big chunk of money, I'm going to support it. And hopefully, we'll see what happens a month from now. I think this has to be revisited more than quarterly, because I think things are going to change dramatically over the next 60 days. But I think it's a great start, and I support the plan, as is.
I think we should be updated per meeting as to where it is, because you're going to, you're going to see those differences week to week or within a month's time.
Yeah. We're going to see how the economy is going to come out of this pretty quickly.
Trustee Baum.
What's the cost of the Fireman's Park Pavilion, and what is the potential of pushing that back to a later date?
Well, those are capital costs anyways. That's capital borrowing.
That's capital anyway.
Can't touch it.
How does it help our general?
Yeah. I'm trying to figure out anything.
It is, oh, I'm sorry. I believe it's about $400,000, but that is proceeds from borrowing.
So we can't touch that?
Well, it's in a different fund, which already has been approved and bonded for, so I don't think we could, we could transfer out of that and put it into the general fund, because that's not what it was designated or voted on to use.
The total projected shortfall is the $925,000?
I think on the high end.
High end.
On the high end.
He said anywhere from 5 to 925.
I'd...
I'm going to go with Trustee Wing, and then I'll come back to you.
Well, I was just going to comment, similar to Terry, I think Steve did, you did a great job. Five of us on this board went through this before. We remember the economic downturn. It was not fun, and employees were hit hard by that. The whole village was. We were looking for all different ways to save money, just as we are right now. But I just want to make clear to the public, and Dean, maybe you can add to this, but logging Wilderness Park is off the table right?
It is. For those nice meters that are...
Just so we don't get any letters this year, because I wanted to make that clear to the public.
Okay. Well, that's crystal clear. Trustee Zabel.
I would generate a motion to amend and let it be resolved that the Village Administrator directed to report back, no less than quarterly, that I should be there, it should be monthly, because at least monthly, we have a report from Finance every month, it's where the income, where the revenue is and what's up. So probably the second meeting of every, every month, we should have a report as to where we're sitting.
That's your motion to amend?
Yes.
Do I have a, motion made and seconded, discussion.
Excuse me, can you repeat that? I don't think our mic was on.
All right. Say it again. Trustee Zabel.
Basically, the motion to amend, can you hear me now? I don't think so.
It's not working.
Okay. These mics are probably not working.
Try to one next to you. Keep going down the line.
Can you hear me now?
No.
Can you hear me now?
I mean, barely.
Can you hear me?
Can I just repeat?
Sure. Repeat the motion.
The amendment...
As long as you repeat it.
The amendment motion by Trustee Zabel was to address the Board monthly at the second meeting of every month.
Correct.
And second by Trustee Baum.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Further discussion? No further discussion, and this is the vote on the motion to amend. All those in favor? Trustee Baum.
So at what point do we, as a Board, talk about the programs and starting the programs up that we're anticipating closing? The park and rec, the income from the park and rec department, we're not having baseball, soccer, whatever sporting event, we're canceling that for the summer. Are all those canceled now? Is that, is that done? We've committed to that, or is that another item on another agenda?
I think it's on Item E.
On this agenda? The Item E on this agenda?
Operation to the Village.
Follow-up.
Right.
Follow-up question.
The paperwork in front of you.
Follow-up question.
Can we answer this question until we understand what we're doing on this issue? If we're shutting down everything, or are we not shutting down everything?
I think part of what's been put into these figures is how and what programs will be opened and what perceived revenues will be received from them. I'm sure that that's been thought of and put into the formula as to what is required, and that's part of probably that slide.
You could ask Steve.
Could ask Mark. See what he...
You had a follow-up question? Trustee Kaminsky?
Yeah, I was going to, I was going to say, I'm assuming that, Steve, that's the assumption in the figures that we're looking at here, is that most of these programs are shut down for the summer, correct? At this point?
That is the assumption. We try to look carefully at both the revenue side and the expense side. And I'll also say that, you know, at this point, there's, that's one of, that's only one of several items that are pretty significant, that are very difficult to predict right now. You know, just as an example, another item on the revenue side that's having a significant impact is on the hotel motel tax. That's $200,000. And it's, you know, I don't think any of us really know how hotels are going to bounce back at the end of this. You know, when it gets, when we get to September, October, November, December, are, is it going to be back to normal, or is it going to be, you know, basically at zero? So on that $925,000 number, that does, as President Walter was saying, kind of assume a very pessimistic scenario. And that's also why, when we sat down and did this, we tried to do things like the picnic table, or even the seal coating for that matter, if things get a lot better and... for that matter, if things get a lot better and, you know, we're able to offer more of the parks programs that, than, than, than maybe we, we built into these numbers and if people are utilizing them and signing up and we're getting that revenue, then, you know, we can always carry that money over, catch up next year, you know, do extra seal coating next year, carry over the money for the picnic tables, carry over the money for the fire ropes, you know, all of those kinds of things. We, we can still use that money for the purposes the board wanted, but the timing would be a little bit different.
Further discussion on the motion to amend? No further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Want to oppose, back to the motion as amended. Further discussion?
Just like make comments.
Trustee Kaminsky.
I, I'm not going to make any motions or amendments because I think the work that Steve put into this for right now, for where we know we're at right now, which is kind of nebulous, I think it's, it's good and I want to stick with this. I don't want to start saying, let's put in the splash pad. Let's do half of this or half of that. We can live a season without a splash pad, a new splash pad. Let's just let it go like this and see what happens for a month is what I would suggest.
I think it's more repair to the deck.
Well, even that. I mean, we'll be fine for a summer.
Further discussion? No further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Zabel?
Aye.
Trustee Baum?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Myers is absent. Trustee Peiper?
Aye.
Trustee Wing?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item on a new business is water tower selection of color and logo. Bring our Public Works Director, Ratachek, forward to give us some information and background on this new business item. Larry.
I hope to have a little lighter discussion topic than, than what we're going through. Bringing the water tower selection to you, I previously taken to the Building Construction Oversight Committee for discussion. The discussion involved color palettes and a placement of the Germantown flag logo going forward on the towers to be constructed and or repainted. The committee favored the elimination of logo on future tower painting. With the forthcoming construction of a new elevated tower at Gateway Crossing and Rockfield Road, staff is interested in determining a color scheme for this very visible water tower and for existing water towers. Staff is recommending a change to the color scheme and logo utilized in the past and discuss a refreshed appearance for the new and current water towers as they are, as they get repainted. I've attached a few examples on a, on a display here. The evaluation of the ability of the Germantown flag logo to take and abuse, the abuse of the local weather conditions and ultraviolet rays is very poor. You can see on the top two towers, one tower is Tower One by the fire station. Go up, Michelle, right, the two at the top, there are now two beige ones. The left one is Tower Three on Mequon Road and the right one on the right is, the one on the right is Tower Three, Mequon Road and one on the left is Tower One at the fire station. You can see if you get close enough, the, the yellow and the red in the, in the flag logos has just deteriorated, sometimes almost invisible. It's very expensive to paint that on. Staff is recommending a change to the color scheme and logo utilized in the past and discuss a refreshed appearance in your water tower. Evaluation of the ability, oh, I went through the array, sorry about that. So the new tower due its location and elevation will be the most visible water tower in the area. Staff feels that Germantown should take advantage of this fact. The water tower that we're going to build on Rockfield Road currently is going to be 135 feet tall. If and when we ever decide to bring Richfield into our water service area, we have to add, we'd have to add 30 feet to that tower, which would make that tower 165 feet tall. From the interstate and from surrounding areas, that tower will be very visible, identifying Germantown to, to everybody. So what I'm trying to do is, I'm not looking for decision on color tonight. Looking to have a discussion and some guidance to go back to the Building Construction Oversight Committee for maybe a color selection there. So we have on here, go to the presentation, the two towers, you see there are the existing towers. If we can scroll up a little bit, it's hard to see these. The tower on the left is a City of New Berlin Tower. You can't really tell the colors maybe in your prints. The bottom of it is a forest green, has a black belt and the top of it is more of a darker ivory color. The one to the right, the green one, I just did that on a, on a Tanami paint screen just to give some variety of color. Scroll through, Michelle, Michelle's running this for me. The blue ones, the one on the right is a Menominee Falls Tower, it's over on Appleton Avenue. The one in the middle is the, the Freighter Medical Complex Tower. It's two-tone, darker blue on top and then dark, dark blue on the bottom. The one on the right in Menominee Falls is more of an off-white, light blue, dark blue bottom. The one on the left is again something I just did on a, on a 3D chart for a paint manufacturer. If we go to the bottom rows, those are some that trustee Baum found, different color paint jobs on those. You can see through the whole thing, the main theme is colored, bi-colored towers, darker on the bottom. The purpose of the darker on the bottom is to hide the dirt that rolls off the top and usually finds itself in the bottom curve of the, of the golf ball, as I call it, or the, the golf tee. So I'm looking for tonight is just to have a discussion. This is something that I guess doesn't come up too often at a village, especially Germantown, but we have the one new tower going up. Tower One is due for repainting. We've been saving money for that and probably next year that would come due. And so I'm looking to see, get some advice and some selection of where this should go. Maybe trustee Baum could add in some comments.
So one of the things we talked about at the Construction Oversight Committee is the word Germantown in large standard print and getting rid of the old world print that we have on today's because that's difficult to read. Removing the word Wilkman, you can't read it from anywhere because of the font that it is and the two types of flags, the American flag and the German flag, you just, they're fading and they're hard to read. They don't really represent a true American or German flag. So what we had talked about at the Oversight Committee was if you look at that bottom left, the Troy, Ohio design, if you can envision the word Germantown written where Troy is and then at a 45 degree angle above the W, welcome to, the word Germantown and somehow incorporate some type of a Germanic flag in there to bring the German flag format. But then in this scenario, the top of it stays white, but we put a collar on that tower that will hide the dirt and the dirt is the biggest problem. That's what makes these things look old and outdated is that stuff that accumulates on the bottom.
The mold.
The mold and we could use an, an algicide paint that would help resist the mold a little bit, but we'll get into that at the Building Committee. But that's the scenario that I was going to be focusing on with the Building Construction Committee, is that Troy, Ohio concept.
I have a question for you.
Trustee Kaminsky.
So David, the Troy, Ohio concept, so it'd be white, like you said?
Yeah.
And what color would the Germantown be in blue on there?
We could, we could do the, there's three bands in there. There's a gold band, a blue band and a gold band. We could do the red, the black and the yellow and still have the Germanic colors in there, but it's really, I think it's really important to get that bottom of the tower.
Dark, yeah, sure.
To hide the mold. So even if it's gold, black, gold, red, black, red, something along those lines, just get the color, the collar in there to hide the mold and then we can get the colors of the flag, the Germanic flag.
So you guys would meet again and come back with a couple of color concepts showing like maybe gold on top or white on top and the band would be, I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Does it make sense to you?
Yes, I'm just trying to arrive, I'm trying to arrive at a process on how to, how, how often we should come back to a full board for a color selection. I'm just trying to arrive at a process. Is this something Building Construction Committee can do?
Don't, don't do that.
I agree with the, with the darker bottoms. That's what you see going on. Most of the new towers or those that are getting repainted, they're going with those darker bottoms and it makes sense in regards to hiding the color, but to go back and put anything that's going to be a blue or a yellow, I would not put on there because are the first two colors that fade on anything printed or painted. So I wouldn't go back with any yellow and try to stay as dark as you can so as this fades out, it's still legible, it's still readable and it allows you a little bit more longevity before you have to repaint. Anytime you're going to add a blue or a yellow to it, you're going to shorten its life and it's going to fade out on you quicker than anything else on there. Try to get that color, especially for the type, as deep dark as you can so that it stays there.
That's where if we use the, the red on, on the collar, if we use a red top stripe, a black middle band and then a red bottom stripe, those are colors that are going to last.
They do better.
Yeah.
They do better. I don't have trouble or a problem changing the font of Germantown to something that's a little bit more updated, whether it be serif or sans serif. I don't, I don't care either way. I think a serif is going to probably cost you a little bit more because of the hoop de doos on any of the, end of the letters. I think just a regular sans serif straight out, you know, I'm not looking for courier, but maybe a nice Helvetica.
Something simple. Something that's legible from a far distance.
Surprise us.
We didn't get into spacing, curving and track.
And readable.
Yes.
Okay, anything else?
So we're here in some direction of two colors?
Yeah, I like the darker color on the bottom.
Try to stay with the lettering, more of a block type lettering.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Some of these logos can get very expensive. They're painting them 130 feet up in the air, hanging over the side on scaffolding, so.
I think what's the average cost?
Keep it simple.
I've seen some logos go 50, $75,000 just for the logo. Costs $400,000 to $450,000 just to paint the tower.
Right.
So it's, another, another 50 to 75 for a logo is expensive.
Do we ever consider corporate sponsors for the water towers? I know some communities do that.
If you go up to the, Michelle, if you scroll all the way to the top and go that green one on the upper right, the lettering on that one isn't, it, it's just block lettering. It's clear, it's concise, it's readable from a long way if you, if everybody zooms in on that one. I don't think we need the word village, but if we drop that down a little lower and above the G, put welcome to on a 45 degree angle in an italicized print, I really think that's all we need to do.
That sounds fine to me.
Get it done.
Like Larry said, it's expensive enough just to repaint it, but what this will start to do is establish the next group going forward.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So you're not looking for any motions or anything, you're just looking for input?
Yep.
Okay. All right, anybody else for input or we got it covered?
Covered.
All right, then we'll go on to, thank you Larry. Next item, which is item C under new business, curbside recycling collection for multifamily. So again, we'll turn it over to the Director of Public Works, Mr. Ratachek.
So this is a topic that's been around, I think before I even started with the village. I'm just gonna, there was a history sheet that I devised. I summarized and attached to all this. I'm not going to go through all of it. Basically, the curbside recycling started in the village July 1st, 1992. The village, in my opinion, maybe reacted a little too passionately for the recycling. Had 35 two cubic yard steel dumpsters manufactured and given out to multifamily and condominium developments. It proceeded from there with supplying and collecting from multifamily units. So our ordinance was rewritten, I think it was in 17. How we define where we should and should not collect garbage and recyclables are defined by the same breakdown. For family or for dwelling units or less, we collect it, both recyclable and trash. Five dwelling units or higher considered multifamily and then we don't collect there. Based on the current monthly invoices from Waste Management, we collect currently 5,571 garbage containers and 7,950 recycling containers. The difference is 2,379 more recycle units than garbage. To date, we've, we've identified 2,065 or 86.6% of the total 2,329 excess recycling units. I have associated a map with my handout to give you a rough idea of where they're located in the village. It's not a great detailed map. We didn't label anything just to give you an idea of, of the scattering. At the time of the 2020 budget, we had requested $30,000 for support of the cost of running the recycling yard. At that time, the $30,000 was denied in the, removed from the budget with the pretense that the village staff would collect that money for reduction of recycling units collected monthly. So I'm bringing to you for discussion and direction, the 2,065 units identified. We don't have all of them. I think that's going to be an ongoing thing. It's getting to be like looking for a needle within a stack of needles and so we're into splitting the hairs. But to start with the 2,065 units would be a big step. You can see that the amount identified for 2,065 units per month is $7,537.25. So open for discussion. Basically, staff is looking for direction. One is to proceed with the elimination of the 2,065 units. Direction on timeframe of notification. In the past, this has been done. I've seen some other notices and we've dealt with Oakwood Condominium Complex, which some who have been here knows that was a lawsuit with the village that, that we came out on top on. Along with that, there were two other developments that were notified that their garbage collection was going to cease because they were multifamily. At that time, the attorney wrote the, the letter and it was at the end of the year, so they gave them about two and a half months at the end of the year and then their ceasing of collection started January 1 of the following year, how the contract started, I guess. So we're looking for direction. Yes, no, we, we proceed with the elimination of these recycling collections, notification timeframe, procedure on how to do it. I'm thinking village attorney, Sejic, may have some guidance for us on this one? No? Okay.
Not listed questions.
Not yet. So that's, I'm hoping we can settle tonight and get some, so staff can get some direction.
Trustee Wing?
Just real quick, how much, you said the difference between garbage collection and recycling was how much? 300 something?
2,379.
2,000?
379 more recycling than garbage.
And we found 2,065?
2,065.
Okay. When there's a commercial business in the lower unit of a building and there's apartments above, what do we do? Do we pick up the recycling for the apartments above the commercial business?
No. I would say we do not pick up the commercial business.
Well, no, we don't pick up the commercial businesses, but have we been doing the apartments above?
I asked that question of, of our admin, Assistant Janice doing this and she didn't really identify the existence of any of those to us. So I would assume that we would not collect the commercial, but it's a good, that's a, that's a really good question how we would divide that up.
Well, in the past, when I investigated this, it looked like we were being charged for it, but we, they weren't picking them up. It looked like, you know, if there's a restaurant, let's just take the Barley Pop, they have their big dumpsters and they have private firm come in there, take the garbage recyclables. There's a lot of cardboard in a restaurant and then the apartment's there. But I was under the understanding that we were paying per unit on those apartments because those are apartments and we decided we were going to do the recycling. So I think we need to look at that. I'm not sure, but that was what, how it was described to me. This was many years ago. So those might be some of the units.
Could be some of the 200 something that were missing.
Yeah, and I, I got a couple of other places that I can... Yeah, and I got a couple other places, I can talk to you afterwards.
We're looking for ideas where to find this.
Where they are, I think I know where they are.
And we have addresses in a spreadsheet of where these are. I purposely did not include that, because I really didn't want to put that out and make it public information before the board had made decisions on what they wanted to do. I could really easily leave here tonight and be told, "Don't worry about it." Leave it status quo and go. So I didn't want to publish anything that would instill a lot of phone calls coming in for no reason.
Okay.
So what I have on the map, shown, we have it itemized by address, by building, on a spreadsheet.
Okay. And when is our current contract due?
I wrote that down. I want to say November. We start getting negotiations.
But we don't have to wait to that because of the language we put in the last contract? Yeah, okay.
I do have a question. Where do, like, the retirement communities fall on here, like the Gables, Virginia Highlands, and places like that? Do we currently collect recycling for them at all? Not at all?
No.
And I do notice that some of the places highlighted have individual containers for each unit for recycling, and some of them do not.
There's a mix. There's a mix. Rivers Bend is going to be one. The multi-unit dwelling unit buildings in the center of that area, the eight, six, eight, 10, 12 units, we collect there, we shouldn't be. They have individual carts in their garages, and surrounding on the outside of that are two families, or duplexes. So we would collect there.
And then, I do have one other question.
Gets very confusing and intricate as you go through.
We gave them the choice to have bins or...
One collection.
Yeah. Each individual facility could choose.
What is the cost, like, of, like, a dumpster for recycling versus picking up the individual cans?
You mean like a three- or four-yard dumpster?
Yeah, like, so, for instance, Ashberry Woods, they do not have individual recycling cans?
No, they have, they have four, six-yard dumpsters, right? I don't know what the charge is, because we, we don't pay for any of those. In fact, with our contract, all our parks and Village Hall is worked on our contract, that's included in our overall costs, so we don't pay any individual cost, so I'm not sure what those cost.
So is it even possible to maybe get some of those, like the big recycling dumpsters, placed in some of these?
Well, that'd be, that'd become...
We're built per unit.
So it doesn't matter if, it doesn't matter if we...
No.
Oh, that's a bummer.
Can I say something quick? Trustee Wing?
Just, I just want to express to the new trustees that when it comes to recycling for commercial buildings, or for apartment buildings, you're going to be hard-pressed to find any community in the state that does it. And that's the reason we're doing this, we're trying to find savings. For decades, we've collected the recycling of these multifamily, commercial apartment buildings, but we don't collect their garbage, but we're getting their recycling. But that doesn't happen anywhere. I think I found one community, when I searched this out 10 years ago, that did it, and they were only doing, I think it was like Green Bay or something around Green Bay, they had their own garbage men and recycling, so they just did everybody. But this is one of the reasons we're looking at this. This is a, this is a huge savings for our budget.
It's $90,447 a year.
Right.
It's big money, especially in this economic time.
For a service, for a service that's not provided anywhere else in the state?
Right, the landlord should be paying for it.
Yeah.
What about Lake Park? So they have individual cans of garbage and recycling, so we collect their garbage?
No, we don't.
Lake Park?
Only one part of Lake Park.
Okay.
One part of Lake, it's very confusing.
I don't, I don't even understand all of it myself where the boundaries are, but it is one part.
One part of Lake Park, there's three different associations. One of them has built in their contract that they're like homes, and we had to treat them like homes. So they get their garbage, and their recycling picked up.
And I see that they're slotted for being removed?
Well, that one, we're not going to be able to remove. The one that has it in their contract, because he says in here, we got to look at the individual contracts. I mean, haven't they...
So Westminster, Square Court, Bishop Drive, all of those are, they have individual cans and recycling?
Yeah. How do I describe this? Every developer's agreement is different.
Right, depending on how that development comes in.
So if they have a developer's agreement that we're supposed to pick it up, we're going to have to keep picking it up. And I, and I'm going to say right off the bat, if we're picking up their garbage by contract, we're going to have to pick up their recycling.
We've gone, every development here, we have gone and read through every developer's agreement. We have pulled every developer agreement to make sure we were conforming to the developer's agreements.
So do you know of that one area of Lake Park that I'm referring to that has that in their contract?
I wish Janice was here to explain it, but she's very familiar with all these areas.
Okay.
Actually, they want a court case.
They want a court case, right. So they are not, they are not listed as one of the communities that we're going to be...
They should not be.
They should not be.
And that's Lake Park East?
Lake Park Homes.
Okay.
There's three different associations.
Lake Park West, Lake Park East, and Lake Park Homes.
Right. You're probably right.
Trustee Zabel, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, the other thing that's to remember is that the recycling got started when the state passed the law that everybody had to collect recycling, which was in the late 80s. So all the developments that occurred before that, none of the developer's agreements ever mentioned anything about recycling, because it wasn't a requirement to do, and it wasn't something that people did. But when the state created the law that you have to collect recycling, then we went into and we started doing the recycling. And the misinformation that was out is that we had to collect from all residential. So back to '92, we went and collected all residential, then the state changed the law that it's four families, and then all this other good stuff, and we stopped collecting, stopped picking them up.
There was also a time in the history where we didn't collect four families, only up to three family, and the DNR called us on that, that we had to change and start collecting it for four families, so.
Right, to do four families, so.
It was a matter of when recycling started, everybody was trying to sort their way through it, and I think we sorted our way through it then, but we didn't unsort ourselves from where we were collecting from.
Right.
And that's what we're trying to do now.
All right, Board, how do you want to progress?
I'll make a motion to...
I have a comment.
Trustee Miller.
Yeah, so this is, I think this has been discussed every year that I've been on the Board, so this is a long time making, and it was discussed many years before that.
Me too.
So to identify this, which is 2,065 units, in order to get the $30,000 savings, we have to start this by September 1st. So I think that's ample time for notification to these places, and it should start on September 1st, that would get the $30,000 savings this year, and then continue to move forward in the following years.
So I'll make a motion to direct the village staff to discontinue the collection of recycling by curbside collection for multifamily, beginning on September 1st.
And we should make it seconded discussion, question, notification?
Quickly.
Thirty days prior to the change?
More than that.
Sixty days prior to the change?
Immediately.
Yeah, I would do it immediately.
As soon as we can.
Okay, immediately.
Are we notifying the tenants, or the owners of the properties?
Owners and properties.
You're notifying the owners of the property, and they would notify their tenants.
You want that added to the motion?
Well, it'll still fill this room.
You want it added to the motion?
It's up to you, you're the motion maker.
I will add that to the motion, that notice to the owner is done immediately.
Okay. All right, discussion. Trustee Kaminsky?
We got it.
All right. Further discussion. Trustee Baum?
Larry, in the original thing, you, there was something about how to do it?
I just want to make, yeah, how to do it, do we, is it a staff letter to the owners? Is it, in previous correspondence, I've seen with the Oakwood condominium lawsuit and the other two developments they notified afterwards, the village attorney at that time drafted a letter to the owners, just to make sure it comes from the right area.
I'd say letter to the owners of the property, or their association.
It can come from me, I have no problem with that, just want to make sure we're following the right protocol.
I think the village attorney, if you're going to be drafting it, should have oversight of it to make sure that it's, it's proper, and that, and if there is any references to any of the state statutes, that it's referenced properly.
So I'll clarify the motion to be that staff prepare a letter, working with legal counsel, to confirm that it is appropriate.
Right, and mail it to the owners of the property, or that association?
The owner was part of the original.
Okay.
Owner or association.
Okay. Okay.
Question?
Trustee Kaminsky.
How do we assure that the owner receives it and does something, or do we not care? We just stop picking up at that certain point?
Certified letter?
No, I don't want to spend the money on it.
On a certified letter?
Yeah.
Two thousand of them, yeah.
So they get it, I'm just thinking, what could happen here?
It's not 2,000, it would be at the most 400, correct?
Yeah, well, I mean, to make this go smooth, right? So they get the letter, if we don't, do we ask them to respond within 30 days that they received it, or do we just not worry about it, they're on their own when that contract's up? Maybe send a second reminder letter?
I get a feeling if they get the letter, we're going to know they got the letter.
Yeah.
That's a good one.
Yep. And once they notify their residents, we'll also, we'll know that they've received the letter. Trustee Miller?
I'm sure the press and the social media are going to help us out on this.
Oh, yeah. Well, this is, like, Trustee Miller said, this is something that's been discussed since he's been on the Board, it's something that we've been discussing since I've been on the Board.
Yeah.
That we've looked at and tried to revisit every time the garbage contractor would come up with Waste Management or whomever we were considering at that time. And if it's, if it's not required for us to pick up, then why should we pay for it?
I would like this to hit social media, because, you know, all the people on social media, in Menominee Falls, in Macwan, in West Bend, in Milwaukee, every community around here, they're going to say, "What are wrong with you? What's wrong with you people? We've been paying for our recycling collection for decades. You've actually gotten something free for decades, and now you want to complain." I'm, I said early on that, I know many of my residents are going to be contacting me, and I think this is something we have to do. You can't, look at how tight our budgets are.
We have to put the record straight. You have to pay for what you're supposed to pay for, and you shouldn't have to pay for what you're not supposed to pay for. And we've been, like you said, covering it, but you will have and hear a lot about precedence, and you've been doing it, and why can't you still do it? And it'll, it will, it will fill the room. There'll be plenty of outcry to each and every one of us from those that are within our districts, that this will, in one way or another, touch. So, but I don't disagree with it, because I'm not, like you said, budgets are tighter in any way that we can look to save money, and as Trustee Hudson had pointed out, this is almost $100,000. Further discussion on the motion. No further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None opposed, it's unanimous.
No, I heard somebody did something.
Does anybody oppose? No, unanimous. All right. Next item under New Business is Engineer Consultant for Freystad Road, Maple Road Intersection Improvements.
So this is the intersection improvements to Freystad and Maple Road. This has been going on for about a year now. Previous village engineer submitted, along with the Taddy Group, an application to the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for a HISIP grant, which the village was awarded. We're moving this along rather quickly, because the process of this should have been done last fall already, and we have to make the June 1 deadline with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation to make sure we don't lose our grant funding. So I kind of covered some of that. It's a 90% funded project. We estimate the project will be about $1 million, and they will fund 90% of the designing construction cost. Part of the design cost is hiring a consultant to do the engineering work. We went through the process of hiring and selecting a consultant. I sent out SOQs, soliciting qualifications to five firms. One firm selected to not participate, so we were down to four. My committee consisted of myself, Josh, the Assistant, Washington County Highway Superintendent, and Max Marashaw, the City Engineer for West Bend. Through the selection process, we elected Graef Engineering, and we entered and negotiated a contract with them. This was my first time through, this is a very outlined process with the DOT. The price we arrived at for the work is $139,524.23 to perform the design and soil investigation. Some estimate amounts, in the application and what was approved, the 90% approved in the grant for engineering was $143,848. Our 90% amount would be $125,571.81. The village's portion would be the $13,952.42. So it's a little bit of a savings, but we did come under, at least within or under what our estimate was going into the grant process. Staff is requesting Village Board to approve the contract with Graef, the amount of $139,524.23 for the design and soil investigation of the Freystad Maple Road Intersection Improvements.
I would make the motion, and we follow staff's recommendation.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the staff's recommendation. Discussion. More questions?
The only thing I'll point out, that currently staff has negotiated a lot of $2,000 savings for the building.
Correct.
Staining budget.
Further discussion.
If I could point out, too, the schedule of this, this is a, this is a final construction of, in 2021, just so everybody's aware of that.
You know what the anticipated solution is? More lanes, turn lanes?
Turn lanes, traffic signals.
Traffic signals.
We do have a drawing of that, if you'd, like, I could forward it, I didn't include it in here. But it's right turn lanes, left turn lanes, the whole intersection geometrically be redone. Traffic lights and, I think, two street lights at the intersection.
Okay. But it's all just enhancements within the intersection, nothing with the roadway?
Nothing more than a couple hundred feet within the intersection, yes.
Further discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Zabel?
Aye.
Trustee Baum?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Peeper?
Aye.
Trustee Wing?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Did you say Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I called you Trustee Miller, yes?
He voted.
Okay, good. All right, then I'm not paying attention. Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Next item under New Business is Item E, Village Operations Following the Termination of State Safer-at-Home Order.
I put the motion forward, only due to 2020 is presented tonight.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion.
And again, it's basically, since the government's on its other video opening, following the Washington County...
Well, it says a little bit more than that. Shall we read it?
Well, it's definitely therefore, it's only needed to allow it therefore to be...
Well, it goes through the premise of why, which is dealing with the COVID-19 health and emergency order, and then the Washington County Public Health Department has indicated they do not intend on issuing a local order to replace the safer-at-home order, and that they are encouraging businesses that choose to reopen to follow appropriate guidelines, including their blueprint for reopening Washington and Owazaki Counties, and whereas a community at large begins to reopen, village government must also begin to return to normal operations, and now therefore be it resolved by the Village Board of the Village of Germantown that normal governmental services and operations of the Village of Germantown shall be resumed in accordance with the Washington-Owazaki Public Health Department's blueprint for reopening Washington and Owazaki Counties, and be it further resolved that the village administrator is authorized to implement the blueprint as village operations normalize, which includes the authority to deviate from the blueprint where appropriate, and to address unique circumstances after consulting with the village president, the attorney, and the police and fire chiefs. Trustee Baum?
So just for clarification, are we suspending the orders, the authority we gave you to make emergency decisions? That's not suspended? We are simply agreeing that we're going to open up based on Washington and Owazaki County?
Open up the Village Hall operations.
So if something...
Not the village, the Village Hall.
What about the rest of the village?
We are not choosing to do anything additionally, nor is the county, in regards to restrictions, resolutions, or recommendations for how businesses should open. We're leaving it to the individual... We're leaving, we're leaving it to the individual.
So the individual business is at liberty to do what they want?
Right, this is with village hall.
Yeah, okay.
Operations.
And you still have the authority to make emergency decisions? As required?
As passed, the past resolution, yes.
Okay.
Village Administrator?
If I could, there's a couple of areas that I wanted to highlight related to the, to the blueprint, as, and as department heads and I have been talking about the blueprint and going through it, I think where we would plan to do is if this is adopted by the village board tonight, then, you know, take some of the parks programs to the Parks Commission, and get some additional detail and feedback from them about what those programs might look like, how we can offer those programs and meet the, the guidelines that are included in the blueprint. The library board is, is meeting this week as well, and I think the, the intention is to, again, if this is approved by the village board, to get more detail from the, the library board about how to open the library with complying with this, and what that might look like, how it might work. There are some things in the blueprint that, that I think, as, as we go through, are going to be somewhat controversial. You know, I'll start with masks, that the blueprint, the guidelines are that when social distancing is not possible for, for meetings or for services, that participants in those meetings should wear, should wear masks. You know, obviously, we're not going to require that for people coming into village hall, but it is going to be something that village employees are, we're going to ask them to do. So, not when they're in their office, or their cubicle, or those things, but when they're interacting with the public. We're not asking people, we're not asking village employees to wear masks when they're driving their public works truck, but when they're interacting with, with the public, they, they should. Another example that I could bring up are basketball courts, which the Parks Director and I talked about a couple of times today, where the guidelines are pretty clear, that we should not be opening up our basketball courts. I know there are some other communities in the county that are. So that would be the, the kind of thing that will, will come up under discussions. Concerts in the park, fireworks, parades, all of those kinds of things are covered in the guidelines. And, you know, if we, if you adopt this, and we move forward in that direction, and there is language in the resolution that says, there can be deviations, there can be things that occur, but I, I thought it was important for village operations for us to get this direction from the, the village board, so that as we open up, we, we know the, the direction that you all want to go, and, and we can follow that, and we can make changes as we go forward, but, but this kind of provides that framework.
So during your discussions, and talking about, just go, let's go to parking and rec first and foremost, and since Mark is in the audience, what is, what has the discussion been for, for kids' clubs or any other kids' camp programs that many parents that are working, both parents are working, can depend on for, for helping to watch and, and have their kids do something during the day while they're at work?
Boy, I wish I had a crystal ball, but-
Me too, I'd be a rich man.
We, we've been following this for the last several weeks, both at the state level, local level, what is the, the best practice proceeding and going forth? At this point in time, and we'll be discussing this with, as Administrator Creklo mentioned, we'll be discussing it Wednesday night, based on conversations we've had, we are planning to move forward with a kids' club program. Probably not going to look exactly like it has looked in the past. Give you a couple of examples, field trips, you know, traveling to some of those venues, larger groups, probably not going to happen. So we've been looking at, where can we hold our program with smaller groups that, that meet some of the social distancing recommendations that are out there? We also, things we know, we know that the, you know, Germantown schools are not available, at least till July 1st. We know that one of our churches that we've used for a number of years is, St. Boniface is not going to be available for us this summer, based on the direction that they just, just gave us. So we have a couple churches that we're looking at, we've got the remodeled Fire Station Number One, Homestead Hollow County Park, but we're looking at smaller numbers. And so we're trying to figure out how we're going to manage that. We did have quite a, quite a few families that registered back in, in February, late February, early March. Some have changed their plans, but we're trying to be relevant, we're trying to be safe in the way we, we, we do this. So there's also talk about low to high-risk activities, an example being the basketball is, is more on the medium to high risk because of the physical conduct, or contact, excuse me. T-ball example for, for kids, tennis is on the low end, so I see those being able to, to proceed. So we're trying to, in a relatively fast manner, you know, come up with the best plan we can for the families of the community. So we will see some impacts, we're hoping to lessen that. So we're going to proceed with some things, and I'm sure some people are going to question what we're doing, and some are going to be happy. So, but I think it's fair to say that larger group activities, the concerts, things where we have 100, 200 people in the park, those really are not meeting the, the guidelines set forth by the county health department. So, and we, we met as recently as today with some of the, the other departments and the directors in Washington County. So our thought was, as much as possible, we want to all look like we've thought this through, and understanding that each community can have some, I guess, some differences, some, in how they approach it, but, so hopefully that helps a little.
Questions? It, it sounds to me, from, from, just from what I'm hearing from Administrator Creklo and yourself, is even though it, it says in the resolution that the Washington-Ozaki Public Health Department has indicated that they do not intend on issuing local orders to replace the safer-at-home order, and that they are encouraging businesses that choose to reopen to follow appropriate guidelines, including their blueprint for reopening Washington-Ozaki Counties, as a guideline. It doesn't mean that they should follow it to the letter, I mean, you're going to follow it as best possible, but in most cases, you know, we're, we're on a balancing act here in regards to revenues versus resources versus, you know, safety. We are also dealing with, in most cases, the lower end of the spectrum of those that are more susceptible to COVID in regards to age group and kids. So I'm, I'm wondering, you know, how, how stringent we're going to be, and how that's going to impact some of the families as they start going back to work and looking, you know, for the normal help that they have used the village for in regards to watching their kids, or helping their kids to be safe while they're, you know, both the mother and the father, both family members are at work. So I'm kind of hoping that we don't go too far to one side, but are looking at it as a balance, so that we still have that, that ability to support and to, to help.
I think you're right, I think that's a good word to use, is a balance. Balance the assisting the families with doing it in a, in a safe, in a safe manner, and one that we've, we have their confidence going forth, that what we're doing is providing for them is, is the right thing. So.
Trustee Wing?
So when we pass this resolution, we are saying that all village employees have to wear masks when they're within the six-foot zone of somebody else? That's what we're saying? Yes.
Would we be considered village employees?
Where's your paycheck? Unless you're going to give your paycheck back, like art.
So- Would we, would we be required to wear a max mask at the next village meeting?
It'd be recommended.
If we were here?
Not if you're six feet away. We can spread out. I, I just want to go on record as I don't think, I don't believe in enforcing that on, on-
But we're also giving it, we're giving that option to the village administrator to choose, and to, to, as it says here, the authority to deviate from the blueprint where appropriate. That's where I'm looking for that balance, because it, even the county isn't going to their blueprint to say, we, we want this to be used across all businesses. They're saying, we have it here as a guideline, and we are suggesting that you use it, but we're not going to replace the safer-at-home removal order and say that you must use it. It's, it was there at the time that the order was in place, and it was a way to transition the opening for business in Washington-Ozaki County. Trustee Kaminsky?
I, I, I agree with what Steve has in the whole resolution, I mean, and it does make sense that when you're dealing with the public, say somebody comes to talk about their property tax payment or something, they're just across the desk, three feet away, yeah, I'd prefer my village person that I'm talking to to be wearing a mask, I don't know that person. I mean, you're having public contact in a, in a public scenario, and yes, I want, I want that assurance that somebody is, that I'm paying for, actually, as a constituent, is, is taking this seriously.
On the other hand, there's some belief that the mask isn't helping.
I understand.
That's actually spreading the disease, because especially when you're taking it on and off constantly.
I think it's up to Steve.
If I, if I could just-
Village Administrator?
First of all, just, I know in the meetings we've talked a lot about common sense, one of the common sense things for me is not to tell my bosses what they should be doing, so for, so for the trustees, you know, you can, you can decide that for yourselves. As I look at this as, as the administrator, and I think about it in terms of, of customer service, you know, we interact with all kinds of people every day, we don't know what their health issues are, we don't know what their, what their thoughts are, what their worries, what their safety concerns are. So, and I, I don't want to make this burdensome on, on village employees, and I, I want to try to apply common sense to it, so as, as we've talked about it, if you're in your office, or your cubicle, or in your truck by yourself, you don't have to have a mask on. However, if, if you are at the counter, talking with someone about their tax bill, or if, and we'll have to work out some of the details for things like parks, parks programs, we'll have to, to work out some of the details in the library, what that looks like, but, but when you're interacting with, with people in the public, and I understand there's, there's differences of opinions on, on, you know, what masks look like, and how they work and how they don't. I think for us, we, as staff, we need to go with what the county health department is, is recommending, and they're not requiring it, but they are recommending it. And I, I think that's, that's the direction that, that we should go with staff, and that would be my intention if you, you know, if you do adopt the resolution.
I'll also remember that it's, it's, there's a difference when it's the county looking at countywide, here's what we're going to recommend to you, our businesses in terms of what you should do. There is a difference between the county saying, you must do, versus we recommend, versus us as the business saying, what do we need to do when we're looking at things like liability for health claims that may, you know, if, if we don't require masks, and that's a best practice that's otherwise identified, we may end up with workers' compensation claims because people are getting sick. You know, it, it's a different level of things. That's one of the reasons why the resolution is designed to be just dealing with governmental operations. Certainly, we can look at other communities in the area that are, you know, putting forward orders or recommendations to, you know, the, the community at large, that's not the approach here, that's, that's, that, that's not clearly the, the, the best practice, you know, from a, you know, conservative mindset at, you know, of how to deal with, you know, the public at large, but when you are the business, when you are the ones making the decision, looking at the liability issues, that's where you need to make a decision for your employees in terms of what is and isn't best practices that we're going to require. So it is a little bit of a different stretch, and, you know, quite honestly, Steve, he doesn't need to tell you guys not to, you guys are not technically employees, that, that you're officials, there's a slight distinction, so you would probably not be covered by that, although certainly, you know, we would recommend masks just because, you know, we think they work, but you can do what you want. Further discussion. Trustee Zabel?
The only thing I'd point out is that the, one of the studies that they came out with in the summertime, when the heat's up, that this virus doesn't seem to live well in warmer weather and sun than it does in an indoor, and if you want to talk about a basketball court, or music in the park, or some of the other stuff with the heat up in the summertime, chances are the virus is not going to live as long in the air. It may be things you want to consider to possibly keep those things open, instead of closing them up, when you looked at the number of people. But if, if indeed the studies that I've released, I've seen so far, is that the virus seems to die relatively fast when it's in hotter air and more humidity, so that sounds like Washington in the summertime.
Village Administrator?
Well, and I, I want to be a little bit careful in, in responding to some of the things, because I, first of all, I'm not qualified to, you know, I'm not a scientist, I, I, I look at these things, I read the same things, I, I have a lot of my own opinions, but when I'm acting on behalf of the village, it's, you know, I try to separate those opinions from, from my, my role. What I would say, though, is, in the conversations with the county, this is actually the, the copy of the frequently asked questions, that's kind of the meat of what they're talking about, that I sent out on Friday, was the 13th version. So they are, as, as things change, they are frequently updating this, and I think, like, there's going to be conversations about basketball courts, because some of the communities are opening them, and, and others like us have, have not yet. So I think they are going to be looking at that, and that's one of the things that, that could change. And I'll say, I just, I have to say that, that's one of the things that kills me, you know, basketball, I think, you know, those of you who have known me for the past couple of years know how much time I spend on basketball courts, and it kills me not to have those baskets up. But it's, you know, I think there's a possibility that that might change in the, in the not-too-distant future, you know, and it may be because of what, you know, trustee Zabel, what you were pointing out, but, but I, I think the county is, is really trying to look at this from the perspective of opening up as much as they possibly can, and while balancing that with the overall safety of the community.
Further discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Opposed, raise your hands.
Aye, I oppose.
Two opposed. That takes care of all items on tonight's agenda under new business, takes care of all agenda items. Before we adjourn, does anyone have any announcements? If not, the regular next village board meeting, or the next regular village board meeting, will be on Monday, June 1st, at 7:00 PM, here at the village hall boardroom. Thank you all for coming tonight, thank you all for watching, and have a good night. Good night.